Is going before the pledge.
It's on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. I'm Paul Cole of the Monday, September 9, 2024 Southwestern City School Board. Meeting the board. Roll call. Mr. Angelo Steel.
Here.
Ms. Siskini.
Here.
Ms. Martindale.
Here.
Mrs. Peterson.
Here.
Ms. Rosso.
Here.
Next, guidance, the adoption of the agenda recommended by the Board of Education. Approved the agenda for September 9, 2024. School Board. Make a motion to approve that. Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Make a second.
Second. Peterson.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. I do have an addition to the agenda. If I could please. Under item O, executive session, I'd like to add to the recommendations. So, we recommend the Board of Education adjutant to executive session, Board Policy 0166. Consider the appointment. Employment. We'll put discipline in that promotion or compensation of a public employee. And also, we're going to add at the end in the discussion to the Board's legal counsel of disputes involving the Board that are the subject of pending or imminent court action. Can I get a second on that, too?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Angelo Steel. Okay, it's your best mended motion. I'm Mr. Rosso, second by. Roll call. Mr. Angelo Steel.
Yes.
Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Rosso.
Yes.
Can I get a motion to adopt that agenda now?
Yes. To me, your vote is yes.
Can I get a second? Take, Ms. Martindale. Roll call. Mr. Angelo Steel.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Rosso.
Yes.
Moving on now to a room with the minutes. Recommend the Board of Education approve the meeting minutes for the August 26, 2024 meeting as attached. Make a motion to approve that. Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Siskini. Any additions or corrections for that? Seeing none, roll call. Ms. Martindale. Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo Steel.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Rosso.
Yes.
Moving on, any order shorts this evening? Seeing none, we'll go to public participation related to agenda items. And we'll have a tie-up call.
Good evening. I would like to start by thanking you, Mr. Rosso. Okay. I would like to thank you for taking the time to meet this meeting about the Silas Family Resource Center and taking a walk with me to get a very unbiased opinion and view of that. And it's very beneficial and I don't want to go into this. During your visit to the Silas Family Resource Center, we noticed that the center manager's office was closeted. Speechless, that full-time positions in our building have no office or office space by legal assistants or in the clinic and family advocates or administration. Yeah. So, I'm curious as to know how a $5 million preschool building was built that holds 130 preschool students in the morning and 130 preschool students in the afternoon, half of which are both sessions or social needs? And there's one bathroom. There's four toilets for girls, two toilets and two urinals for boys. And I'm not sure of my year, but little boys don't know how to use urinals. With no designated staff bathroom. This building was built with no designated gross notice space, as we saw. And this building was also built with no safe access to parking or a playground. Parking for the old Silas Family Resource Center was an issue when there were just four classrooms. There's 10 now. The size of the classrooms aren't big enough to hold all the required centers. The sizes of the built-in lockers hide the student scenes and the size of the desks for the teachers are things that should have been considered but weren't. There was a Grove City Messenger article written last week about that building and how wonderful that clinic was. What would have been wonderful were all the items that I mentioned above being addressed. What would have been great was getting and using the feedback from the people that actually did the work in that building and know what is important. But instead, people that have never spent time in those environments are clearly who made those decisions. Mr. Rosso said that the school board didn't get to see those plans. I went through the meeting minutes and you guys didn't. And I think that's a problem. That was something that was mentioned in the minutes for last month. Property services, I'm sure, talks to people, but they didn't talk to the right people. How do they decide what's most important? Who checks to make sure that the projects are being done and being done in a way that is needed and useful and not what's quickest and the lowest bid for our tax dollars? I assure you that no one working day in and day out was consulted about the Silas Family Resource Center. And I also want the Board to know that I am not ungrateful for that building. As I told Mr. Rosso, that building was needed. I just wish it was money better spent to be functional for the families and the students. It'll serve. In the Facebook post, there were several things that were highlighted that were talked about in the minutes from last month about tracks and things like that. But there were things noted that Grove City's track is in actually unsafe condition. The central crossing track actually doesn't need resurfaced. It needs just replaced. You can stick your hand through it by reaching under it. It just builds our safety concerns. And I'm just, I would like to know who's being consulted and in what order are we rating the importance for these projects to be done? There in the board policy, policy number 7100, it talks about facilities planning. And the Board of Education, and it says in part that the Board of Education Building Program will be designed to provide adequate facilities to conduct educational programs for all students residing in the district. The building program will be based upon specific board policies that have been and will continue to be modified to conform to changes in the curriculum, availability of construction funds, changes in enrollment, and the results of annual evaluation of facilities. The Board will establish priorities using these and other relevant factors. The Southwestern City School Board of Education believes that any educational program is influenced greatly by the environment with which it functions. The development of a quality education program and school facilities that help to implement it must go hand in hand. It is this Board's goal to provide the facilities needed for the number of students in the district to provide the kind of facilities that will best support and accommodate the educational program and to develop a long-range planning and evaluation program. The Board recognizes that capital outlay funds are limited and that it must establish priorities in order to make the best use of school building dollars. With that being said, the Silas Family Resource Center and what was discussed last week, or two weeks ago, I'm sorry, doesn't seem to fit that board policy as someone on the outside. Again, Mr. Rosso, I really do appreciate you taking that walk. I think it meant a lot to several staff members to see you there and know that you were listening and heard and saw it. So, again, thank you, thank you.
Moving on now, we have student staff achievement with Ms. Martindale.
Good evening, everybody. I've been a little bit under the weather, so forgive my raspy voice today. So, we've got some good stuff to talk about. So, first of all, over the summer, nine Southwestern City School District High Schools, high school students participated in Buckeye Boys and Buckeye Girls State. This is an eight-day hands-on experience in the operation of the Democratic form of government. And congratulations to Franklin Heights and Westland High School students that were accepted into this coming year's program. It's very exciting. And then this, really, I thought this was just absolutely amazing. So, Franklin Heights High School senior Kenny Hewitt has been named to Ohio State University James Comprehensive Cancer Centers Pre-Aids Program for high school students. He's one of only 10 students to be named for the program. And it featured over 100 applicants across the state. So, it's very limited and he got in. And what that is, is they paid a summer research opportunity at the James. And last week, Kenny presented his research project. Just the name of this is super impressive. It's the LISA-based detection of SARS dash basically COVID-2 spike antibodies with a peptide library. So, I'm just impressed with that title by itself. It's pretty amazing for high school students. So, he was able to make that presentation to Franklin Heights High School Administration at the conclusion of that program. So, congratulations to him. I'm excited to see what they and man's going to do with his life if he's writing things like that in high school. And then congratulations to Westland High School junior Antonah, who was selected for the 2025 Ohio State All-State Choir. And she will be one of 120 students around the state of Ohio that will perform at the OMEA Professional Development Conference in February in Cleveland. This will be her second year, actually, to be a part of this prestigious ensemble. And then congratulations to all of our students who graduated last month during our summer commencement. If you ever go to those, they're a really awesome experience. So, I invite everybody to come summer to that. And then for the Southwestern City School District Staff Achievements, we have several really great things to mention here. So, congratulations to Grove City High School math teacher Joshua Blankenship, who is recently recognized by the Yale Office of Undergraduate Admissions as recipient of the 2024 Yale Educator Award. So, congratulations to him. And then students entering the Yale class of 2028 were asked to nominate outstanding educators who have deeply impacted their lives. So, Mr. Blankenship was nominated for the Board by Grove State High School and current Yale freshman Rupit Basu. That Yale Educator Recognition Program recognizes outstanding educators from around the world who inspire and support their students to perform at high levels and achieve excellence. Out of this year's 320 nominees, who represent 39 states, 24 countries, 75 teachers and 20 counselors were selected to receive the award. Matriculating students were invited to nominate high school educators in a committee of Yale admissions officers review each nomination individually. So, I definitely want to recognize how that, the fact that that is a very rare thing to be nominated and to win. So, congratulations to them. And finally, thank you to all of our staff members of the district who have worked tirelessly to pull off our first few weeks of schooling. They're going really well. And so, thank you to all of you who are present. And that wraps up my report.
Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Moving on now, the items for action under Fiscal and Operational Management. That was Mrs. Siskini.
Thank you, President Rosso. This evening, we have seven action items under Fiscal and Operational Management. Number one is revised permit appropriations for fiscal year 2024-25. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the revised permit appropriations. See X1. Number two is investments and financial statements for August 2024. It is recommended that in accordance with Section 135.14 of the Ohio Revised Code, the Board of Education approve August investments. See X2 and cash position reports for the month of August 2024. See X3 as submitted. Number three is the payment of bills. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve payment of bills according to the list of checks for the month of August 2024. See X4. Donations. I want to focus that real quick. We have total donations for the month of August of $124,954. And I wanted to recognize some folks who donated. All School or WCMH, NBC4, Grove City Central Forensic Street, Cypress Church, Tom Finacy Back to School Project, Costco, Laura McIntyre from the community. They donated backpacks and school supplies in the sum of $91,483. Quite substantial. And a special thank you to all those folks. There will be notes of thank you going out to everyone who made donations. But I just wanted to bring those folks front center because that is phenomenal. Moving on. Number, where am I, number five? Thank you. Authorization to pay bills in accordance with Section 5705.41 Ohio Revised Code. It is recommended that the Board of Education authorize the treasurer to pay bills for August, which were not processed in accordance with Section 5705.41 Ohio Revised Code. See X6. Number six is the service agreement and memorandum of understanding with the Franklin County Sheriff's Office. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the service agreement and the memorandum of understanding between the Southwestern City School District, Board of Education, and the Franklin County Sheriff's Office for Services for Franklin Heights High School and Westland High School for the 2024-25 school year as presented. See X7. And number seven is resolution participate in the Meta Solutions Cooperative Bus Purchasing Program. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution to participate in the Meta Solutions Cooperative Bus Purchasing Program. Whereas the Southwestern City School District Board of Education wishes to advertise and receive bids for the purchase of school buses, they are for it to be resolved. The Southwestern City School District Board of Education wishes to participate and authorize Meta Solutions to advertise and receive bids on said board's behalf as to specifications submitted for the cooperative purchase of buses. We have worked with Meta Solutions for quite some time. There's cooperative of over 300 districts in the state of Ohio who use them. And so, they, we get. I don't want to say discounted, but we get approved group rates from Meta Solutions.
We'll take this count now.
We'll take this count, too. Laura wants to get this down. But group rate raises being in a cooperative. Mr. President, after reviewing these items, I would like to move them for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Siskini. Can I get a second, please? Second. This is Martindale. Roll call, please. Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Angelo Steel.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Rosso.
Yes.
Moving on back to Ms. Martindale. Right, for action under student school community.
I've got three items for action tonight. The first one is North Middle School eighth grade students requesting to do a trip to Washington, DC. The trip is planned for this October. Student school has three days to school. All trip expenses are paid by students and parents. Central Crossing High School Westland teams requesting to travel to Alliance High School. Alliance of High Ups is the Westland charter. All trip expenses are paid by Blue Surges. And the students will miss one day of class as this date comes due of 2025. And then the Grove City High Schools NJRTC is requesting to travel to Honolulu, Hawaii. And that will happen December 4th through the 9th of 2025. Students will miss four days of classes. Trip expenses are being paid by students and parents and maybe funds and and after reviewing the items for action, I move them for passing.
Thank you so much. Can I get a second?
Second, Siskini.
Roll call, please. Ms. Martindale. Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Mr. Angelo Steel.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Rosso.
Yes.
Moving on now for items for action under personnel with Mrs. Peterson.
Thank you. Okay, so, as you guys know, the district continues to hire. We're always hiring. All right. So, what I will say, though, is we are in a decent position. Of course, we would like to be in an even better position of staffing. But we will take where we are because it could be worse. So, we are in a decent area. One of the highest needs for employment in the district is with the full-time and substitute educational aid positions. Just going to put out the obvious. It isn't the best position, right? We know it's that position that takes a lot of work and special skill to want to do. But it doesn't mean that there isn't someone out there that wants to do it with children. So, I put that out there because I want you to encourage people if they think that they can give it a shot, give it a try and come be a part of our district to be an aide, that would be great. So, we also continue to need bus drivers. And with licensing and training can be provided through the district. Don't forget custodians, cooks is also needed. This is also a reminder. Remember, we are offering a special bonus incentive for our substitutes this year and based on workdays in those roles. So, work 50 days and earn a $500 bonus. Reach 100 days, you get $750 bonus. And at 150 days, receive a $1,000 bonus. Okay? So, continue to try to spread the word, encourage people to apply and come out to apply for Southwestern City School District. Get those high schoolers that graduated. Tell them to come substitute. So, with that, in our great Personnel Department that those ladies in that office keeps me and Matt on our toes and our numbers together, here is your report. We have six personnel items involving 127 persons. Three are certificated resignations or retirements. Six are classified resignations. One, certificated change in employment status. Eighty-five certificated employment, forty of which are supplementals. Six classified changes in employment. And 26 classified appointments. After meeting with Matt, I move this report for approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Peterson. Can I get a second? Thank you, Ms. Martindale. Roll call, please. Mrs. Peterson.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. Mr. Angelo Steel.
Yes.
Ms. Siskini.
Yes.
Ms. Rosso.
Yes.
Moving on now to the public participation related to non-agenda items. The first people would be Ms. Yvonne Bear.
Hi, thanks so much. I'm here to talk today, although Mrs. Peterson just mentioned it, about the current crisis caused by two bus drivers in Southwestern School District. This is a problem that doesn't just affect Catholic school students. Because of the shortage, they've actually lengthened the distance of each bus stop. So, many children are having to walk even further in the dark, in the cold, each morning to reach the bus stop. The burden, however, has fallen particularly on our Lady Perpetual Health, which is a K-8 elementary school, which as of this year is now switching buses and Grove City High School. So, their ride has gone up exponentially as they now have to spend time going to a different school, waiting for other schools to transfer, and finally taking a ride to their destination. Obviously, I understand that with fewer bus drivers, my child's time will be longer. But now, not only is it longer, we increase the chances that something can go wrong for some of the small students in our district. I didn't live here, but I did switch buses as a kid and it was a hobby. You know, my first bus would be late. The second bus was, you know, was not there, was absent. As a young first grader, I'd be stranded at a high school. This was a pre-9/11 era. So, they left the side door open and give your last for help. Obviously, you can't do that anymore and you shouldn't do that. But, you know, it's what we can do today. So, so far, the new transfer system has actually left a third grader behind twice. Now, coincidentally, he had an older sister who goes to Grove City High School. So, thankfully, he wasn't actually alone ever. But, you know, he was upset and was crying. There was a fire drill, there's things coming out. And of course, not all of other kids are going to be in that situation. So, you know, on paper, this is a better system. But, you know, this system depends on every student and every bus being on time every day, which we all know is never going to happen. Students as young as five are going to a school where no adults are responsible for them or knew that they are. You know, then in the madness of pre or after school shuffle, they're trying to find their bus before it's too late. After the time change, most of the switching is going to happen in the dark of the morning. You know, so this greatly increases the chances that a small child probably gets run over. It's a huge safety concern. I know from a public records request that two years ago, we spent about $17,000 trying to recruit teachers, agents, bus drivers, secretaries, administrators. I know last year, we more than doubled that to $39,000. I just want to say, I really appreciate it. I know you're on the right track, but I'm asking you to double that again. Obviously, this is a good problem to have, right? This area is booming. Many more people want to live here, want some of their children here. But unfortunately, the incentives to become a bus driver have really not kept pace with inflation and the rising hospitality in Columbus. I want to say, I really loved all the bus drivers who we have had. They are wonderful people. They've gone above and beyond for us on so many occasions. But without more of them, obviously, our children's future and our whole economy is going to crack to the hump. So, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Next up is Chris Orman.
Thank you very much. You have the mic. We're passing these rounds out, okay? I think it's fine. It's your rate so far. So, thanks, everybody. So, my name is Chris Orman. I'm pretty tall. My name is Chris Orman. I am a professor and a Nobel Prize-winning physics department at Ohio State University. And I am an educator running for the State Board of Education. Over the years, I've worked with many hundreds of math and science and computer science teachers. I've worked with Plum City Schools. I've worked with Metro High School. I've worked with the educational service centers across Ohio. I've worked extensively with the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce on science standards and on a new high school math class that has connections to computer science that is now over 40 high schools across Ohio. I have engaged the legislature to advocate successfully for more education funding. I've engaged the legislature to advocate successfully for more sensible education policy bills, which is not their strength for the time. And I am a concerned educator running for the State Board of Education. I am also a parent running for the State Board of Education. So, I've had elementary age kids in my house. I've had teenagers in my house. Some of you know what that's about. And currently in my house, I have a toddler, which is why I'm a little tiger right now. So, that's why. And some of the kids that have been in my house were there as part of a kinship care arrangement. So, I know a little bit about kinship care. I know a little bit about foster care. And my perspective as a parent is something that I bring to the State Board of Education. Now, I have political opinions like everybody else, okay? So, I have a share ground sign in my yard, which I display proudly. But this is a nonpartisan seat. It's a nonpartisan race. And I am here to say that I am running to represent everyone in District 6 and not just one side. Okay? And for me, that is easy to do because the way the education policy is crafted in Ohio is so dysfunctional that it doesn't matter which side of the aisle that you're on to appreciate how dysfunctional that it is. I'm going to unpack that for you in a second, okay? Six or seven years ago, I started going to statewide teacher meetings. So, the math teachers have their statewide meeting in Columbus. The science teachers have their statewide meeting, computer science, physics, engineering. And began to notice that in the course of a typical year in Ohio, the heads, the presidents of these and other wonderful teacher organizations are rarely, if ever, invited to meet with policymakers in the state house. They are rarely, if ever, consulted about the policies that are being debated. And if they're involved in the process at all, it's at the 11th hour when it's too late to change anything and that there's something that's going to a vote. And it doesn't matter which side of the aisle that you're on to agree with me that we should be talking to teachers first instead of the last. Okay? That is what I mean by a nonpartisan candidate. Now, what am I going to do if I'm elected to the State Board of Education? I want to answer that question by talking about what I want to answer that question by talking about what I've been doing for the last year, okay? So in my life, I have influenced two bills in the Ohio State House. I live very close to the State House, by the way, which is a national advantage. It's kind of eight minutes from the State House. And one of the bills, which was passed in law in 2023, provides millions of dollars to allow Ohio licensed teachers to go to Ohio colleges to learn to teach computer science for free, okay? Would you like me to continue to advocate for Ohio teachers to go to Ohio colleges to learn new skills for free? If so, then I'm going to need your votes in November, okay? The second bill that I influenced was just a few months ago. I figured out before almost anybody else did, before the computer science teachers did, before the Honesty for Education bill, I figured out that there's a legislator who is about to put into the session a new high school graduation requirement, okay? If you want to give a high school principal a heart attack, call them up and say, "New high school graduation requirement," okay? I figured it out, and I met with that legislator. I convinced him to change the wording of the bill so that if it did get signed into law, it'd be easier for schools to implement, okay? That is what I mean by being a nonpartisan candidate. So I'm Mr. Chris Orman. I am a scientist, I am a parent, I'm an educator, and I am a nonpartisan candidate for the State Board of Education. Thank you.
Moving on now for items for discussion. Anybody got any discussion items?
I don't have any discussion items. I'm sorry.
You're fine.
I don't have any discussion items. And I've been so busy, I didn't get to say it. So I'm going to say this right here. But I just want to say, the Westland Grove City game was amazing. It was really good. And it was a wonderful evening to be able to see those two high schools come together and play. Those players played against each other with respect for each other. And the fans back and forth, it was just a great atmosphere. It was just good to see. And I just wanted to say, that's what I want to see all the time.
I was there, right?
So, that was awesome.
All righty. Next, we'll go into executive session. It's recommended for education here to execute the session according to policy 0166, considering employment, employment, promotion, or compensation of a public employee and that discipline, I'm sorry. And also to discuss, discussion with the board, legal counsel on disputes of policy with the board that aren't the subject of pending or amended board action. I, can I get a motion to move this forward? Thank you, Ms. Liskini. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mrs. Martindale. Roll call, please. Ms. Liskini.
Yes.
Ms. Martindale. This is Angelo Steele.
Yes.
This is Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Bosso. Yes. We do not expect any more after the executive session, but you're more than welcome to stay. Thank you.